And tell them how much you appreciate what they do. And we as a board, we truly do appreciate what our administrators do, our principals, assistant principals, so thank you very, very much for that. Students, as we look around, you didn't go to school today, but you'll be going tomorrow. But today was a professional development day in the county and our teachers were scattered around the county in various locations. And I know some of the board members had opportunity, Dr. Stone as well, and myself, to go and visit some of these sites and see some of the things going on. And a lot of really good things are going on, or was going on there today, and I'm sure that's going to translate into the classroom. And Dr. Burns, thank you and your staff for putting that together. They did a superb job. And actually, I talked to a teacher this afternoon after the session was over with. I happened to run into him at Walmart. And they indicated that it was really a good, good day, that they learned a whole lot. So they were very pleased with the day they had. Next item on the agenda is our invocation, and I'd like to call upon fellow board member, Mrs. Linda Coffey, to do that.
Bow our heads. Loving and gracious God, we thank you tonight for all your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our school events, and for all our staff members, both the teaching and support staff. We ask that you bless them abundantly as we continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in our decisions we make tonight for all the good of all, for those who have placed their trust in our leadership. Amen.
Next, we have two students to do the pledge of allegiance. If they'll come forward, they are from Granite Falls Elementary. Caleb Green, who is the son of Rachel and Chris Green, who is the principal down there at the elementary school in Granite Falls, and also Woody Langford, 4th grade student, son of Mindy and Woody Langford. So if everyone will please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Thank you, Caleb. And thank you, Woody. Next item is the approval of the agenda, which the board has had for a number of days and had opportunity to review. Do I hear a motion that we approve the agenda as has been presented?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion passes. Next item is the approval of the minutes, and once again, the board has had opportunity to review these. This is for our September 8th regular school board meeting and a closed session meeting that we had on that same night. Do I hear a motion that we approve the minutes of those two meetings on September 8th? Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes on September 8th, regular board meeting and closed session meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion passes. Next, we have the special recognitions and the honors, and you've had opportunity to see the artwork in the hall, and if you haven't, be sure to look at that on your way out. And also, we have some really fantastic honors to give tonight, so we're looking forward to this. And so I'd like to call on our community relations director, Mrs. Libby Brown, to come, and the board will move down to the front, and we can congratulate these students and adults as they come forward. And if you can just wait until we get through the honors and recognitions, and we'll give you an opportunity for those who need to leave at that time to leave. Thank you.
Good evening, Board Chairman, Daryl Pennell, board members, and Dr. Stone. It is our honor to congratulate those students whose artwork is in the Education Center Art Gallery, and it's nice this evening to see so many parents out to support their students, their budding artists in the Caldwell County School System, and their artwork will be on display until November the 7th. So you're welcome to come into the Ed Center anytime and enjoy your students' artwork. So students, as I call your name, please come forward for a special recognition from the Board of Education. We'll start with Bayton Elementary School, Jason Teef Taylor is principal, and Jenny Green is art teacher, they're both here this evening, and Kate Greer is our star tonight. She's 1st grader from Bayton Elementary School. We're going to move to Davenport A-plus School. Julia Knight is the principal. Adrian Dula is here this evening from Davenport, and Dabney Smith is the art teacher. Natalie Carpenter, she is a kindergarten student, so she has started already with her artist pursuits at kindergarten. Fabrizio Figueroa, and he's a 3rd grader at Davenport, but I don't think Fabrizio is here this evening. Okay? And Ben Wachner. Ben is a 3rd grader, I saw Ben earlier at the reception, so Ben is here this evening, and very nice photos here, so please look at your artwork, it's on display in front of you. And we'll do one more school, okay? Dudley Shoals Elementary. And the principal is Gwen Roop. Alexis Buchanan is the art teacher. Kara Jefferson, we have another kindergarten student. So Kara is here this evening?
Yes.
Avery Smith, 1st grader at Dudley Shoals Elementary. And Morgan Woody, 4th grader at Dudley Shoals Elementary. Okay. We have Gwyneth Quinn, Gwyneth Morgan. Okay. So this is our first little group. Parents, get your cameras out, all your cell phones. Let's get them.
Can you back up a little bit? All right. Hold your sticks. All right. Okay. Everybody smile. Just keep smiling till the camera stops.
Yeah?
Keep smiling. You got it.
Yeah.
All right. Congratulations.
Okay, from West Lenore Elementary, Amy Loman, principal, is here, and Melissa Jarazewski is the art teacher. We have Angelina Hammons, 2nd grade, Angelina Hammons. There's Angelina. Let you have your moment. Sophie Peterson, kindergarten student. And Shayla Argueda Sanchez, who is also a 3rd grader from West Lenore Elementary. So I think you may just have one here this evening. Okay. And remember too, when you come to the board meeting, you get this beautiful medallion and ribbon, so take that with you. From Wynton Elementary, we have Andy Berry as principal and David Hefner as art teacher. Samara Carroll, 5th grade. Roxana Rangel Hernandez, 5th grade. I know this little child is here, Ashley Urbina, 2nd grade. I saw Ashley earlier, yes. So from Wynton Elementary School. Now, do you want to go to the middle? We have two, we have a middle and high school student, do you want to do, let's do the elementary.
You two have to smile a lot more. Just do it.
Okay, we have William Lenore Middle School, Lisa Vaughn, principal. Leah Crump is the art teacher, and we have one piece of artwork from William Lenore, and it has been created by Bailey Woods. And Bailey is an 8th grader at William Lenore Middle School. She is the daughter of Tim Woods, who is in our maintenance department and our safety, yes she is. And we have one from the high school arena, that's West Caldwell High School. Andy Poole is the principal, Kevin Abie is the art teacher. And the student is Ashley Herr, she is a senior this year. So I wasn't sure if Ashley made it. Okay. So we have Bailey in the spotlight. Yes. Okay. Students started school on August 25th, and if you count today, that's less than 50 days in the calendar. We are still in the first nine weeks of the first semester of school. And I tell you this so you can get the full grasp of our next recognition. Nicholas Thompson, 7th grader at William Lenore Middle School, has read 1 million words this school year, as recorded in accelerated reader. Yeah, I heard the gasp. When you do the math, it's quite staggering. Let me see, like 20,000 words a day. Congratulations to Nicholas. He's our speed reader. And I'm not sure if he's here. I'm going to take a guess he's reading. Okay. So Lisa says, you want to come up and get his? So Lisa Vaughn is his principal, so. Yes, so let's get, watch this Nicholas. Next, we're going to go to our schools. Davenport A-plus School has been recognized as a positive behavior intervention, intervention and support model school. This is Davenport A-plus School's 2nd year of participation in what we call PBIS in the school system. Through completion of all the requirements for a green ribbon school, the first recognition, and completion of Module 2 training, the school is now recognized as a statewide model school in positive behavior. So we'd like to have Davenport A-plus, someone, is it Adrian Dula, the assistant principal, and?
Corey McCaffrey.
And Corey McCaffrey. So, yes, thank you for being with us, and both of you representing Davenport tonight. So let's give Davenport A-plus. Now, in its 4th successful year of the PBIS program, Gamel Elementary earned designation as an exemplar school, the highest level of recognition. The school met all the requirements for this recognition by demonstrating results achieved through working together, using school data to implement research-based practices, and developing supportive systems to teach all students new behaviors. So this is Gamel Elementary's 1st year as an exemplar school, and I think we have Anna Cricks with us, who is the assistant. And Char, I'm sorry, I didn't see Char. Yes, you have, bring them all.
Come on up. Char, if you'll introduce.
Yes, please come, come introduce.
This is fourth grade. This is Linda McGee, she works everywhere. Great turnout.
Thank you. We all, we thank you. I'm going to.
Hello. Thank you. Thank you.
Take a picture with us.
Why? You're tall.
All right. We're going to take one.
I'm trying to look smaller.
And this whole two step over just left, right there. Excellent.
We're not finished. For the 5th consecutive year, Gamel Middle School has earned the designation as an exemplar school, and remember, this is the highest level, so for five straight years in PBIS, a distinction that places Gamel Middle School as one of the select schools in North Carolina that has been awarded this designation for five straight years. Only about 4% of North Carolina schools ever even obtained the status for one year. So it's pretty incredible that Gamel Middle School has done this for five consecutive years. We have Dr. Michael Wyatt, he's the principal, and if he'll come forward for his recognition.
And any staff.
And any staff, and Keith Hyman, if you'd like to come forward also, because Keith Hyman is the director of middle school in the school district, and he's also the coordinator for the school district for PBIS. So Keith wanted to say a few words, and he also has a special recognition.
Okay. And right before we take our pictures, I would like to recognize Mr. Hill. He's been selected as a recipient of the First Annual PBIS Leadership Award provided by NCDPI. This recognition nomination was actually submitted by Dr. Wyatt for his outstanding efforts to support positive behavior intervention and support in North Carolina. Mr. Hill's been critical for helping out such schools, not only at Gamel, but Davenport, Bayton, Gamel Elementary School, and now this year Hudson Middle School is beginning. We're looking forward to also bringing onboard this year Hudson, Sawmills Elementary School with Module 1 training in October, and they're going to look to implement for next year. So Mr. Hill, thank you for your work, not only in our school district, but throughout the state as well, too.
Thank you. Congratulations. And Dr. Wyatt, Gamel Middle, Brian Hill, Gamel Elementary School, and Davenport A-plus School will be recognized in Greensboro for this statewide recognition on November the 4th, on Election Day. Now, we're going to turn our attention to the national level. And we've been, we've been discussing state recognition. Well, we have a school that has just received national recognition. Caldwell Early College High School is one of the nation's 2014 National Blue Ribbon Schools. Only 287 public schools and 50 private schools in the nation were selected for this national honor. Of the 337 schools recognized, the Caldwell Early College High School is only 1 of 5 in North Carolina, and 1 of 48 in the nation to be recognized for closing the achievement gap. And we were trying to get our figures going here about how many schools there are in the United States, and we think it may be around 99,000. So of 99,000, if you start breaking it down, then 337 are nationally recognized, and then 1 of 48 of those closed the achievement gap, and 1 of 5 are in North Carolina, and 1 is in Caldwell County schools. So congratulations to Caldwell Early College High School. Yeah, Candace Hagaman is principal, and she has some with her.
Candace, you got to do some introductions quickly.
We have Ms. Ellen Rose, and Ewok Franklin, Sendal Shavers, Denise Allen, Ingrid Lee, Sharon Green, Lynn Braxton, Brittany Braxton, Kim Burns, Alexa.
All right, we're going to, we're going to do one more thing before we do this. If you all are ready, there's another honor for our early college, so.
Yeah, it doesn't stop there, even though that's a great honor. They have just recently been recognized by our state superintendent in a luncheon in Durham that the early college high school was among the select group of districts and schools across the state to be invited to this special luncheon in Durham honoring the 12 school districts and 43 high schools for having the highest four-year cohort graduation rates among all districts and schools in the state in 2013, 2014. So congratulations again to Caldwell Early College High School for this statewide recognition, and they received 100% graduation rate. So, their year. So this is the year, their year.
All right. Keep smiling.
One of the other great honors, and congratulations to all of our students and to our staff members and our schools for being honored, but we also have an honor tonight for our Board of Education. As you may or may not know, all boards of education are elected by the people, and therefore, one of the requirements of serving on the Board of Education is that they go and have continuing education. So they're the only elected officials that are required to do that, except for some ethics training. But our Board of Education has done that, all seven members, and at a recent meeting, they were recognized for having all seven members completing the requirements, and it's surprising that not all school districts do that. And if you were to ask the number of hours that these board members have put into extra training to become better board members, they would give you a huge sum of courses and hours that they've been in training. The training is important because it gives them an opportunity to learn how to be better boards members, board members, it gives them an opportunity to understand how public school law works and a whole bunch of other things. But needless to say, all seven members of our Board of Education have taken this to heart and were, and did receive a special achievement award by the North Carolina School Boards Association to the Caldwell County Board of Education for successfully, all seven members successfully completing that requirement. So one of a few districts in the state that did that. So congratulations to the Caldwell County Board of Education.
earned, and the Caldwell County School System, and teachers, and associates, and administrators, and parents, and students of the Caldwell County Schools, because Dr. Stone was also at that luncheon in Durham where Ms. Hagaman was, and he received an award for the Caldwell County School System, because we're in the top 10 of school districts in North Carolina for having the best graduation rate. So. That was 90.9%, it exceeded the state of 83.8%, and since 2006, we have increased our graduation rate by 25%. That's pretty good.
Of course, the graduation success is reflective of all the people that play a role in the education system here in Caldwell County. So we appreciate everyone that's in the school every day, but we also appreciate all the volunteers and business partners and the parents that are so active in, in helping our teachers, and you are a part of, a big part of the success that Caldwell County Schools has enjoyed. And certainly being in the top 10, having a blue ribbon school, you know, this is fantastic, and we truly are proud as a board of the achievements that our teachers, our administrators, our schools, everybody across the board. We are truly grateful for all that you do. Before we move on, if you need to go home, and maybe your child needs to do some homework, or maybe you haven't had dinner yet, now would be an appropriate time to leave. You're welcome to stay with us, but if you want to leave, have a safe trip home, thank you for being here. Go ahead. I think Joe Shams has something he wants to say, go ahead, Joe.
October the 4th, on a Saturday, I got to go up to Oak Hill Elementary School. They have a high school class reunion, for those that don't know, that wasn't originally a high school. And got the opportunity to go up there, Mr. McDonald invited us, and that was an awesome experience. I have family from Oak Hill, but I just was amazed at the turnout, I had no idea what to expect, but there had to be a couple hundred people in the gym. It was full, the food was prepared, it was excellent, and the meeting was supposed to start, and I could get this wrong, but I think it was at 5:00. But there was people there, I was told at 3:00, old classmates coming in and sitting around mingling, talking. It was a great experience for the community and for our county, I mean, something to be proud of. You know, the, the high school was 100 years, 100 and a couple years, I don't remember the exact dates, 103?
105 years old and 100 years graduation.
Yeah, 100 years graduation. But there was, my aunt was there, she was like the class of 1943, I think, so it was a tremendous thing to get to go to it, and.
So, that was 90.9%. It exceeded the state of 83.8%, and since 2006, we have increased our graduation rate by 25%. That's pretty good.
Of course, the graduation success is reflective of all the people that play a role in the education system here in Caldwell County. So, we appreciate everyone that's in the school every day, but we also appreciate all the volunteers and business partners and the parents that are so active in helping our teachers, and you are a part of, a big part of the success that Caldwell County schools has enjoyed. And certainly being in the top 10, having a blue ribbon school, you know, this is fantastic, and we truly are proud as a board of the achievements that our teachers, our administrators, our schools, everybody across the board. We are truly grateful for all that you do. Before we move on, if you need to go home, and maybe your child needs to do some homework, or maybe you haven't had dinner yet, now would be an appropriate time to leave. You're welcome to stay with us, but if you want to leave, have a safe trip home. Thank you for being here. I think Joe Shams has something he wants to say. Go ahead, Joe.
October the 4th, on a Saturday, I got to go up to Oak Hill Elementary School. They have a high school class reunion. For those that don't know, that wasn't originally a high school. And got the opportunity to go up there. Mr. McDonald invited us, and that was an awesome experience. I have family from Oak Hill, but I just was amazed at the turnout. I had no idea what to expect, but there had to be a couple hundred people in the gym. It was full, the food was prepared, it was excellent, and the meeting was supposed to start, and I could get this wrong, but I think it was at 5:00. But there was people there, I was told, at 3:00, old classmates coming in and sitting around, mingling, talking. It was a great experience for the community and for our county. I mean, something to be proud of. You know, the high school was 100 years, 100 and a couple years, I don't remember the exact dates, 103?
105 years old and 100 years graduation.
Yeah, 100 years graduation. But there was, my aunt was there, she was like the class of 1943, I think. So, it was a tremendous thing to get to go to it and to see the community, the outpouring from there and supporting the school as it's taking off, and you know, they, all ages were there. There were some grandchildren that had brought their grandparents there, so it's a good community event. But I appreciate the opportunity to get to go there and represent the school board, because obviously, we support Oak Hill School, but most of us, I was not around for Oak Hill High School. I have family that was there, but it's a great thing, and it's a great, great thing for that community. So, thank you for doing that. I'm not, I think the Realton Club may be sponsoring, I'm not sure. But thank you very much.
We appreciate you showing up, and I look forward to giving the school board, I want to thank each and every board member for all that you do. I think we're grateful after Friday night, we had our office, and maybe several other times, I appreciate everyone who showed up, showing up. That showed up, that school board is interested in Caldwell County, and I appreciate them a lot.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Next item on the agenda is public comment, and as of 4:30 this afternoon, we have no public comment, so we will move along with the agenda. And the next item is our superintendent, Dr. Steve Stone.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and members of the audience who are still left. We appreciate your being here, and we have a lot to be celebrating in Caldwell County, and I think our academic achievement, our graduation rate, there's so much we can celebrate. But one of the things that goes on behind the scene are some of our community partners. They work tirelessly to support the public school system in so many different ways, and tonight, we have two of our outstanding partners who will be presenting briefly about some of the things that is going on. I want to start with Reverend Dale Fisher, if he'll come to the podium. Dale, Reverend Fisher, of course, needs no introduction, a very important figure in our community, in the faith community, but also on many, many civic boards and those kinds of things. So, Reverend Fisher wants to share some of the information that the faith community has been in support of the public school system, and I won't steal your thunder. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Dr. Stone, and thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the board. It's a little frightening for a minister to come after the congregation has left. It reminds me of what happened at the Dry Ponds Baptist Church many years ago. There was a visiting minister, and all of a sudden, many of the men got up and left the worship service, and the minister was just shocked. And so, he said, "What did I say? What did I do wrong?" And he said, the congregation said, "Do you see the red light on the wall?" Well, many of the members of that church were members of the Sawmills Fire Department, and when the red light came on, that meant that there was a fire, and they had to leave. And so, it is a pleasure indeed to be here tonight. Thank you so much. I do want to share with you something that takes place on one of the properties of the school system, and that is the annual parade for the hungry that is sponsored by the Caldwell Baptist Association. And we had our 23rd annual parade for the hungry yesterday, and it began at Hudson Middle School. And I appreciate so much Dr. Griffith giving us permission to assemble there, because the parade begins there and makes its way down to the First Baptist Church of Hudson where it ends. And yesterday, in spite of the weather, we had 200 people that were out for the parade. That was down from the normal 300 or 400 that we usually have, but it was a tremendous experience, and even with the weather, we had the fourth largest in gathering of food in the 23-year history. We had 11,919 items of food that were contributed in addition to $3,562. And all of that food was sorted and counted by 35 volunteers this morning and into the afternoon, and has already been delivered to the Bethel Colony, to Caldwell County Yoke Fella, to the Lenore Soup Kitchen, as well as South Caldwell Christian Ministries. And at the end of the month, we will, in a proportionate way, give every bit of the money that has been received to each of those organizations. Our association does not keep any of the money. We budget money to cover our operating costs, so everything that people give is given to these organizations. And so, we're very grateful for that, and I do want to thank you for allowing us to begin the parade at Hudson Middle School each year. You've allowed us to do that for 23 years now, and hope that we'll be able to do that on the 24th year next October. I do want to also thank you for allowing us to have a prayer walking event on August 23rd, on a Saturday morning at 10:00. This was an idea that came to one of our pastors, and he and I talked about it, and I asked Dr. Stone if it would be permissible to do so, and so, we had 538 people who were praying on every campus of Caldwell County schools on that Saturday morning. And what a blessing that was indeed, and thank you so much. And finally, I want to thank you for your support of the clergy crisis support team. This, something that Libby has helped so much with and been such a support, and you as a school board have been so helpful to us, and it's just a joy to be able to work with you and with school counselors and others in time of crisis. And I'm happy to report that we've only been called out twice during 2014, and so, that's a good thing. That means that the crises have been kept to a minimum. But thank you so much. It is an honor to be in a county where there is such a marvelous relationship between the faith community and the school system, and I thank you as board members very much for all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Fisher. And again, that's quite an impressive record of so much food these times when people need it so badly, so our hats off, and thank you for doing that for the community. My second report, I'd like to have Debbie Eller to come up. Debbie is the executive director for our Communities in Schools program, a highly successful model throughout the state, has some wonderful statistics that she wants to share with you, I believe. Communities in Schools is always, by the way, looking for volunteers to mentor and to tutor. So, we encourage you, I know Debbie will hit you up for that at some point, but for anyone watching this, if you'd like to do it, it is a great opportunity to still feel young and energized as you work with middle or high school students. So, Debbie, welcome, and thank you so much for what you do for communities and schools. And again, I won't steal your thunder either, if you want to share the success. And what a great, and let me just say what a great partner they are with the school system.
Thank you. Chairman, Board of Education, Dr. Stone, thank you for letting me be here this evening. Last week, we received our report from the national office. We are waiting for it to be verified by a third-party evaluator, but we wanted to share those statistics. I've reviewed them and feel like everything is very accurate in them. We want to let you know we're still working in seven schools, the three traditional high schools and the four middle schools. We have 180 to 270 contact hours a year per student, so we spend a lot of time making sure that we can wrap services around these students and we can build what they need to be successful in life. If you look, we served with occasional and kind of one services, or in each school, each site coordinator is required to do eight Level 1 services that address all the students in the school, so they have to partner with or present. Like, one thing that they do in October is always the anti-bullying. They provide the orange ribbons in the schools. So, they served 5,778 students this past school year with those Level 1 services, and that's school supplies, it's college nights, NACs, it's all those different types of things that can be used. We sometimes have students who don't have resources to attend trips, and those students will come to me. We recently had someone approach us on a student from the early college that we had not served, but was in a situation to where we were able to pay his freshman fees. So, those are the types of things we do for students who are not referred to or are part of the traditional program. Last year, we had 503 students receive Level 2 services, and that's a tremendous amount of service. We have two social workers that work with the students as well. And in that time period that we have them in a classroom setting, we do teach entrepreneurism. We're trying to make sure that they're workforce-ready, that they have financial literacy, they understand their civic responsibilities, and they know more about the small business enterprises coming into Caldwell County. We use best practices when we provide those services. They're research-based to make sure that what we're using will provide the quality of service that they need to be successful. We had 21 lunch buddies last year, so those are just occasional services, they're counted in our Level 1 services. If you'll notice, the percentage of the potential dropouts that were kept in school last year was 98.5% of the students that we served. The percent of students that were promoted were 96.7, and the percent of seniors who graduated was 96.1. We're really proud of that, just as the school system's proud of their graduation rate, and as we heard earlier, the early college graduation rate. And we feel like we're a contributor that helps those percentages to increase. Students who improved their behavior were 87.4%. Students who improved their academic achievement was 88.9%. Those improving attendance was 88.7%. Those who improved attitude and commitment was 88.9%. Those are involved in high-risk social behavior, which is not all 503 students, but of those that are involved in those behaviors, we had 78.1% of those students improve and move away from some of that high-risk behavior. The children that we have that have suspension problems that are served in the program, we saw improvement of 76% of those students. We were able to engage 465 parents last year in activities with our students. Many of those parents have not been engaged before with their students in the school environment. And we had 357 families who received specialized services that are outside the school system that provide things such as mental health referrals, rent assistance, electricity, food, clothing, any of those types of things, those that were provided last year. If you'll notice the little graph there, it shows you how our monies were spent last year, and our in-kind partnership with the school system is the largest portion of that, and we thank you for that. The gray area shows that 65% of our funding is in in-kind funding, and that's from DSS and Caldwell Community, or Caldwell School System. We had 236 volunteers last year that provided 9,240 hours of service, and we always give away site-for-student vouchers. We had 80 of those last year, and that's a partnership we have with the Vision Voucher Program, and we're the only agency, I used to be able to say in the four county area, but Lincoln CIS has gone into Catawba County now, and they're able to provide those same vouchers in Catawba County. We also are partnering with the school system and with the community college to provide the Careers in Focus Program for sophomores and seniors. We provided that last year. And last year, we had 1,058 students attend the Reality Store. Those were eighth-grade students who came to the civic center and got a reality check about life. They got to check and see if their career was on track with their education, or if their education was on track with their career, to see if they were being realistic, if their expectations were, and to see what quality of life they'd live in with what they had set up for themselves. We're hoping that that helps to improve their attitude and commitment to school, and that it makes them take a look at how important that education is. And if you have any questions, I'd love to answer those for you.
Want to introduce Donna?
Absolutely. Ms. Bradshaw? This is Donna Bradshaw. Donna is a-
No stranger to us.
She is, was a 32-year teacher in the school system, retired, and I have the pleasure of having her work as our program coordinator. She oversees all programming, she works with all the site coordinators, she helps to develop what they're teaching. She does an excellent job for us, and when she decides she's really going to retire, I'm going to be really sad.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Before asking that question, I just want to commend you on these numbers. They make all the difference in the world with a lot of our students who remain in school and know that they're a part of the school instead of just showing up. They know they belong there with all the kinds of support that you give. Particularly excited about the parent engagement and the academic career.
Yes.
Because that hasn't always been the case. I think when CIS started, that was a big thing to deal with, was getting the parents to feel that they're a part of the schools as well. Just wanted to ask you, considering that and being really delighted to see it, do you see this increasing?
Yes.
The parents feeling a lot more comfortable coming into the schools, participating with the program, and realizing it's all about serving their students the best that we can?
I really do see that increasing each year. I think the first thing that we require of the site coordinators is that that first contact with the parent is, hello, I'm the site coordinator for Communities and Schools, we're glad to have your student. So, it's a positive first contact. Then, anything that comes after that, I tell them, don't just make the negative, the positive calls. And so, what we see is we see parents who are more easily engaged, who feel more comfortable to come in and to talk to us and to get involved in things going on with their students.
Big, big commendation for that.
Thank you.
Just want to make a comment about how long this partnership's been going on, for 25 years. And if I believe, I think I'm correct in saying this, Debbie, stop me if I'm not, but 25 years ago, Caldwell County was at the bottom of everything, undesirable things. Our dropout rate, I think we were the second lowest in the state in North Carolina. Our teen pregnancy rate was off the charts. I think our academic achievement was not where it needed to be, and there, I think there were five factors that was sort of the impetus for starting the communities and schools. And so, over the 25 years, I think Communities and Schools has been such an important partner as Caldwell County schools and Caldwell County community have reached the levels that it has now. So, very important partner, and I know that's been a mission and a vision of Communities and Schools, and Debbie, and Donna, and then everyone who works there. So, I do want, just to point aside, and that is for keep, next month, we'd like to present the teen pregnancy rate. I think we'll be pleased with that too, as we are with CIS. So, just, they've been with us for 25 years and done a phenomenal job, so to all those in CIS and volunteers and mentors, they really do make a difference, and it's a lot of fun. And Debbie, I'm disappointed you didn't ask them for mentoring, so you've got one more minute to do that.
We have a lot of children that would love to have a positive role model come out to the school and be a part of their life. With the downturn in the economy, we saw that kind of take a turn on the mentoring, volunteering part of our program. So, we would love to have adult volunteers, positive role models. I think it makes a world of difference. And I'll just give you an example. We have a young woman who started volunteering with us a couple years ago, and she now mentors at three schools. She doesn't work anymore, so she's decided that she can commit one day a week. So, on Tuesdays, she goes from Hudson to, oh, no, she goes from South Caldwell to Hudson to Granite Middle. So, and right now, she has eight girls that she's mentoring. So, I would challenge you just to take time out of your busy day and make a difference in the life of a child. I know all of you do every day just by position of where you're at, but you can make a tremendous difference. Dr. Stone is there on Thursdays at High Brighton, and his favorite part of the year is, am I smarter than a fifth grader?
No, it's really not. I was going to say, Ms. Bradshaw turns the tables to help the girls, but for some reason, they always win. I don't know why. But it's a great opportunity. Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stone. Next item on the agenda is our Associate Superintendent for Human Resource Services, Dr. Trish Johnson.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Stone, I have three items for your attention this evening, starting with Exhibit 2. Exhibit 2 includes usual and customary items for your information only. Exhibit 3 includes usual and customary personnel matters that require action. I respectfully recommend approval of these items as they have been presented to you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the usual and customary personnel items as presented.
Just a second. Any comments, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And the final item is Exhibit 4, and that includes our transfer request. Since your last board meeting, we had a total of 25 requests for transfers within the district. Of the 25 requested, 22 meet board established criteria. I respectfully recommend approval of the 22 requested transfers. If approved tonight, that brings our total transfers for the year 2014-15 to 504. I respectfully recommend approval of these items.
You all hear a motion that we approve the 2014-2015 students' transfers as have been presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the 2014-2015 student transfers as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Next on the agenda is our final- Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Next on the agenda is our Finance Director, Mr. David Johnson.
Mr. Chairman, board members, and Dr. Stone, I have two budget amendments tonight. Number two is for the State Public School Fund. It is an appropriation of PRC 29 for the Willie M. Behavioral Support in the amount of one hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars. The second one is Budget Amendment Number Three. It is for federal funds. It includes PRC 26, which is Education for the Homeless, PRC 104, Language Acquisition, PRC 105, Title I School Improvement, PRC 111, it's another language acquisition grant, and PRC 112 is Title II-B Math and Science Grant. That is for the Patterson Center. That's a total of two hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars. If these two amendments are approved tonight, it'll bring the total budget for Caldwell County Schools to one hundred and eighteen million, nine hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-one cents. My recommendation may be approved as submitted.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the budget amendments as presented, those being to the State Public School Fund as well as the Federal Grants Fund?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve the budget amendments for the Public School Fund and Federal Grants Fund as presented by Mr. Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Our board has been to several meetings. As a matter of fact, the entire board was at the District Seven meeting recently, and that was in Elkin. And so we're going to have several of the members to report on that as they choose. But I do want to mention that our Vice Chairman, Mr. Tim Hawkins, is not here tonight. He had a business-related meeting out of town, so he regrets that he was not able to be here with us this evening. But anyone have any comments in regards to the District Seven meeting at, at Elkin High School?
I'd like to comment on one of the breakout sessions that I attended. That's advocating for North Carolina students. Glenn and I participated in that one together, and I think Jill Sims was in that one also. We were kind of checking off in our heads what we already know, what we already try to do, because we know the importance of communicating with legislators that, that can make a difference in what's happening, and we hope will make a difference in taking care of our schools and our students at the same time. I think the resounding message that I received was that we can't do a bit too much to stay in touch with our legislators, to know exactly what we need, where we stand, and to invite them to be involved even, even in our district, even if it means taking a day to be a student in the school, or to be a teacher for a day, to see what we deal with in promoting our schools and understanding more those things that our schools really represent, and how hardworking our teachers and staff and all are to make a difference in the lives of our students. So I was glad to see those things that we're doing, but we kept our ears attuned to find out what more can we do as it all wraps around making a difference for the students in our county.
Anyone else? Anything to add?
This is a part of the twelve hours that board members are required to receive, and I think we were the, you all were the only board there that had one hundred percent of the board members in, in there. So, you know, that was quite noticeable, too, to the North Carolina School Voice Association. A great meeting.
Okay. I think we all enjoyed it. We all had a good meal provided by the people there in Elkin. And it was the Child and Nutrition Program there at the, at the high school. But we always learn a good, a good deal at those meetings. And thank you, Dr. Hall, for sharing that with us. Mrs. Coffey attended the Advanced North Carolina Fall 2014 Conference, so if you want to share some, some thoughts and observations of your meeting.
It was a really good meeting, and I'm not going to say, oh, well, I know Carol lives about accreditation, but that's not what I'm speaking about mostly. We had a speaker that spoke at the conference, and he was Eric Schinning, or Principal at New Milford High School located in Bergen County, New Jersey. He has emerged as an innovative leader in the use of social media and Web 2.0 technology as tools to engage students, improve communication with stakeholders, and help educators grow professionally. Eric was recognized in 2012 as a National Association of Secondary School Principal Digital Award recipient, leaning forward, Learning Forwards Excellence in Professional Practice Award 2012 recipient, blogger for the Huffington Post, and co-author of Communicating and Connecting with Social Media and What Principals Need to Know About Teaching and Learning Science. He also was named to the National School Boards Association Twenty to Watch List in 2010 for Technology and Leadership. And I could read all and then write some of this down, but he is ver, I have his blog, too, if anybody would like to look at it. Was very impressed with how he took a school and changed the school around and, and the grades that were there by using a computer. And it was, it was the New Milford High School that he had gone to as principal. It was built in nineteen twenty-eight. Their parents there spoke forty different languages. It was a large diverse population, large ESL population. The school had six hundred and fifty students. So when he came here, he did five observations and evaluations on all the teachers. He said, after he had done this with computers, and the blogs did explain more to you about what he did do and how he done it with computers, and also with the library at the current school, they showed a picture of the library that they were using, and it was real drab. There was nothing on the walls. They didn't allow them to take a drink inside or anything like that. So he knew of a girl he had known before, and he hired her to come in there and redo the library. And it has a picture of the library after, and they were allowed to bring an orange or an apple and various things like that into the library. So more of the students started coming into the library. He also had an area where they had chargers for the computers, to where they could go and get their computers charged almost anywhere in the school. And he had wireless routers extended across the football field, so students could go outside and work without supervision and had charging stations in every common area. The school bought couches where kids could take a nap if they needed to. If it works for Google, why not in the school? They had Lego tables in the library, and the custodian thought the kids to use it. And they had parts of old computers in the maker space, is what they called it, where students could tinker. And a student actually got a job after school from what she had made there. So they had, I thought it was really odd that he had wireless routers across the football field, but if it works, it works. And he was teaching outside the box or as principal leading that school. And after he did all these things, the school had a ninety-eight percent ESL pace, a ninety-two percent reading and math pace. He stated that digital leadership is not about giving you more to do, but a natural complement of what you already have. Schools and many educators are not changing. The learner has changed. We block, we ban, we prohibit. That's a problem. The school world is not reflective of the real world we live in. More people on a device than they do a toothbrush. And he's just, he was so inspiring to me, made me want to go and be a principal and give, utilize these ideas. It was really great. But I do have the blog, if anybody would like to look it up. And John Dewey had said, this was in his things, "If we teach today's students as we taught yesterday's, we rob them of tomorrow." And that is so true. And of course, we had several breakout sessions, and Sharon Bell and Bill Riverbank spoke about continuous improvement through accreditation. That schools, the power of an internal review is increasing student learning and finding areas of change to continue to grow. Doing your own internal review allows you to see areas of strength or weaknesses. Improvement can be gained from this information. And then we had information on the external review team, and I'm not going into all that. Carol knows she worked with that, and I remember that. But we had all of those, the five areas to look at, and then they spoke on how to create a welcoming culture at your school, which was really interesting, too, to make it parent-friendly and business-friendly when people come in. And I felt that was interesting. It was actually a very, very good training, and this Eric Schinning, fantastic.
Carol will tell you, that Southern Association, which will be coming up in two or three more years?
They also asked me to serve on one of those committees that go to a school.
You'll love that. I've served on one.
I don't know, did you?
You will love it.
Did you?
Yeah, you'll enjoy it.
I don't know.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Coffey. We also had Mr. Knight, who attended the North Carolina High School Athletic Association Meeting a few weeks ago in Wilkes-Barre. So you want to share some ideas there?
On September seventeenth, I think, Chair. On September seventeenth, I attended the North Carolina High School Athletic Association District Seven meeting in Wilkes-Barre. Presiding was Commissioner Davis Whitfield and his Deputy Commissioner, King Tucker. Also representing Caldwell County, from High Brighton, Athletic Director Chuck Cannon and Assistant Principal Porty Wright. From South Caldwell, Assistant Principal Scott Lambert and Athletic Director Jeff Parrish. From West Caldwell, Assistant Principal Jeff Mayo and Athletic Director Simeon McMasters. And also, our Associate Superintendent, Dr. Jeff Turner, sir. This is the second year of a four-year realignment period, and as you know, West Caldwell's 2A, High Brighton 3A, and South's 4A. But you can appeal your alignment, but you have to do so in writing before November the first. Considerations for the two thousand seventeen realignment is to have either three classifications, four classifications, or five. We currently have four classifications, 1A, 2A, 3A, and 4A. Another consideration you're going to have is maybe just have a football-only conference, and let them play for two-year periods, and then realign every two years. Currently, each classification is twenty-five percent of the schools. They're thinking about changing it, where 1A and 4A will have twenty percent each, and 2A and 3A will have thirty percent each, because that's where the bulk of the schools are. They had a show of hands off the record. They said, "Do you prefer to travel, or do you prefer to have a split conference?" And there was a show of hands, and it was pretty well-known that we'd rather travel than to play in a split conference. High School Athletic Association is underway with the eighty-five percent attendance rule, but as you know, this school board, back last month, I believe it was, passed that effective next semester. Mark of Callens, State Football Championships, December twelfth and thirteenth. If the 3A team makes it, they're going to play at NC State. If the 2A and 4A make it, they're going to play at Wake Forest. There's been a mercy rule in soccer for years. If a team gets down by nine goals, the game's automatically over. In softball and baseball, if you get behind by ten runs after five innings, the game is over. But new for 2014 in football, at halftime or any time after that, if a team gets down by forty-two points, there'll be a running clock, and that's mandatory throughout the game. Even if the margin has shrunk less than forty-two points, once you reach forty-two, the clock will continue to run. We had that at the JV game at High Brighton last week, by the way. Basketball, forty points. If a team's up by forty points in the second half, there'll be a continuous running clock until the game's over. One thing they discussed is middle school students are not allowed to participate and/or play against high school students during open facility or skill development sessions during the school year. And last thing, congratulations to High Brighton Athletics, Coach Cannon received a certificate for being a non-ejection school for the 2013-14 school year. That's my report.
Very good. Thank you. Sportsmanship, very important.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. Dr. Stone, do you have any other items?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I do want you to put on your calendar October the twenty-second. I know it's, it's a Wednesday from three-thirty to five-thirty. We would like for you to be here. Our principals are so anxiously awaiting to have about ten minutes of your time to present their school improvement plans. They will do a very brief description of what they're going to be working on, and then in November, we would like to bring those to the Board of Education. We'll vote. We'll do it as we have in the past. We'll have two team members, maybe one with three, and we just need about an hour and forty-five minutes of your time, and then that way, the principals can, you can become a little bit more knowledgeable. What you'll see is a lot of consistent trends, a lot of consistent planning, because, again, we ask them to align to the district's plan. So that's October the twenty-second, Wednesday, from three-thirty to five-thirty. Dr. Burns is going to be coordinating that. We'll have your assigned rooms, and principals will come in, and they really are looking forward to it. And the last thing I'll mention, Mr. Chairman, is that, to piggyback on something you said, October being School Administrator Month, I do hope those of you who are listening to this, because I know it's nothing to the board, because you already do appreciate our administrators quite a bit, but principals and assistant principals have a tough job, and certainly they would appreciate any support from the public if you have a chance to see one of those folks, to let them know that you appreciate what they do. It is like running a company, a company of its own, but with all the regulations and rules and personnel and those kinds of things, it's quite a challenge, but they do it well. Caldwell County has a lot to be proud of with our administrators. And I do want to mention, I was extremely proud on October third to have Caldwell County recognized for its graduation rate. Extremely proud. We've come a long way.
I think, as a board, we are truly proud of the achievements in regards to graduation, and the early college getting the blue ribbon recognition as well. And I'm sure the board will have opportunity to see a number of principals this month, so tell them again how much we appreciate them. Next is the announcements, and our work session will be coming up on October the twenty-seventh, and that is going to be at West Caldwell High School, and that'll be at three o'clock, our fall work session. And if you have any items that you want to place on that agenda, if you will see me, or talk to Kathy, or Dr. Stone, those things can be added to the agenda. And at six o'clock that evening, we will have our Community Board meeting at West Caldwell High School, and that is that same date, October twenty-seventh. And-
Can I also mention that five-thirty, we are going to break and have a reception for sixteen German exchange students who are visiting the county, and two teachers and a principal. And at five-thirty, we'd like to informally have a reception with them, and then at six o'clock, I know we'd like to formally recognize them. They're very, they absorb information about how we do it here in the state. So haven't had a chance to meet them yet, but they are looking forward, according to the teacher, to, to meet you. So at five-thirty, we'll break for a reception for our international guests. And Lex, we invite you to be there as well. Practice, practice your German. In this week's e-notes, you'll get some German phrases that I've researched for you, so practice those.
Thank you. Is there any other announcements? Okay. Do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Is there a second?
I take a motion.
All those in favor say aye. And any opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you for being here. Have a safe trip home.